Today's September 7, 2016. The time is 10:00 a.m. I call the meeting to Montague County Commission to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have 28 exoneration listings for 13,373-30. A request from Mark Muzek for a corrected tax statement number 8115 from Martin Power. Vouchers, General County, 180,813-24, 911, 9,148-21. Chestnut Ridge Park, 550, Camp Muffley, 1,058-55. Mason Dixon Park, 350. General County, purchasing card vouchers, 7,616-1551, 911, 195-65. Camp Muffley, 875-31, for a total of 200,606-47. We have a budget revision for law enforcement, 704-59. The sheriff has received a donation for body cameras for $100. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities, the Mon County Planning Commission, NPO Citizens Advisory Committee, Farm and Protection Board, fiduciary orders of September 7, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. Do you have any introduction to new employees?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Now's the time for comments from the public. If anyone wishes to rise and speak, please state your name and address. And you have three minutes. Comments from the public. Hearing done, we'll close that session. Thank you. Colleen's not in today. You have anything for her?
No, I do not.
She has some health illness. Hope she gets better. Tell her we miss her.
I will.
Okay. We're way ahead of schedule. Tim Ball's not arrived yet. 10:20 is the estate. 10:30 are the estates. Correspondents. Down to correspondents.
We received a letter from the Wine and Jazz Festival asking that we reconsider the amount that were, the minimum payment requirement of $9,000 to $7,500.
Either commissioner want to address that?
What was it before, correct?
$9,000.
It was $5,000.
$5,000?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would like to reconsider our motion of the $9,000.
I'll go ahead in a second.
Yeah. For discussion, I think clearly, I guess there were, I don't really know. I'm just...
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Okay. We reconsider the, we're reconsidering the contract.
Right.
So...
Well, the discussion was that we would be able to earn, we being the camp board, would be able to earn $9,000 if the buildings were able or available to rent. In other words, actually, if everything were rented, it would be something like $13,700. $9,000 was what we had then decided on, was a good figure. $9,000 was also the amount of money that was paid to the camp board as a fee for last year. In other words, that was the income that came. I don't have any, I personally don't have any problem establishing it at $7,500 for this year only, and then renegotiating. In other words, I, you know, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And if you look at section M, I asked to put in a sentence, which is exactly what we just talked about, with regards to the festival and here, and to consider the contract for the following year. So it would be done in the 60 days of negotiations after. So therefore, once this is done and complete, and in the next 60 days, we will discuss what the contract would be next year, so there would be no surprises.
Oh, okay. So instead of waiting right before the thing, have it right after this one, the negotiation?
And they agreed to that.
Oh, that's...
So I thought that would be better, and that way we keep it here.
I think that's an improvement.
Yeah. And it just is a compromise on both parts.
Okay. So we have a motion.
We would, I would move that we accept this compromise, setting it at $7,500 fee for this year, and then the fee to be renegotiated within the 60-day period after the festival's held.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
I have a new contract for you to sign as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need a motion for you to sign that?
I don't think so. You'll prove the contract, so... That's, that's one of the few things I get to do.
Sign.
Renata. What else you got, and of correspondence?
We received a letter from Lisa Hopkins, who is the current state auditor. They are again offering audit, not audit, budget training to boards and authorities of county, of county and municipal boards and authorities. I believe that we sent that same invitation out to all of our, the boards and authorities that we appoint members to, if you want to do that again.
Yeah.
You need a motion to send out another letter? Is that what you're saying?
Let's make it move. Yeah. I'll move that we send a letter to everyone. That way we formalize the process.
The three of us will sign it?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
One final item. President Gordon Gee has sent a letter. Do you like me to read it?
Yes. Go ahead.
"I wanted to take the opportunity to write the three of you a note of thanks for all of your help in all the projects that we are undertaking between the county, the city, and the university, and particularly for the latest memorandum of understanding regarding how we can best thoughtfully approach the support of the county through voluntary contributions. This is an important step in the maturation of the university and the county, and an opportunity for us to continue to work very closely together. I am most grateful for your help and support."
Thank you. Any further correspondence?
No.
Okay. We, let's see. We're not, we're not quite 10:15, but I think we can start. Tim, was there any other people that you needed here?
I thought Mr. Gianola might be here.
Okay. We'll wait for them. We can continue on and come back to that until he comes. Okay. Unfinished business. We have any unfinished business? Any new business?
Very light agenda today.
Reports from elected officials. Ron, you got anything from Granville?
No, sir, I don't.
We've got the opioid class coming up.
Yes.
When is that opioid class?
Next week, I'm taking a class on train-to-trainer on how to administer Narcan.
Oh, good.
So I'll be teaching first responders how to do that.
Great. Very good. Well, I want to appreciate you and your departments.
September 22.
Effort, yeah. September 22. Thank you for your effort and leadership on this. Please pass that on to all your people. Yeah. September 22, I'm working with Bucky Forbes. What's his, lieutenant?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant. I was trying to remember. Lieutenant Forbes, in the next series of classes to put together a plan to deal with the opioid epidemic. So I hope we have a good turnout like we did the last time. I think we'll be very good. Okay. Rocky, we're kind of waiting on you. We were way ahead of schedule, so you're not late. You're still, you're still early, but we get to, we get to move on to this issue. Thank you. By the way, before you leave, there's something I want to ask you. If you have time to stick around to the end.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to be here today and to present this proposal to you. We've been working, Moreton County Children's Board's been working with the residents of Rockleigh Road to prepare a waterline project for their area. They suffer the irony of being located very near a body of water, but they don't have public water service, and the wells are not that dependable in the area. The residents have done the really hard work, and that is they've obtained a funding commitment from the State Infrastructure Jobs Development Council to fund this project almost in its entirety. I've given you a letter that summarizes that. IJDC has offered a 40-year, 1% loan for 50% of the project cost, and a grant for almost 50% of the project cost. MUB's contribution is about $900 per customer in accordance with the PSC rules, and that leaves a $50,000 local match. Typically, IJDC likes to see some local money in the, in the project funding, just so that there's some local skin in the game. And knowing that the commission has in previous years followed a general policy of something on the order of $2,000 per household, we penciled in a $50,000 number in anticipation that the county might be able to support the project. So that's the request, is that the county provide a $50,000 contribution to the project to round out the project funding to win $1.29 million. I will emphasize this, that $50,000 contribution, if you're generous enough to make that, is to the direct benefit of the customers that are going to be served. If, if there's any funding shortfall, those customers are going to end up paying that shortfall in the funding of the project. They're also paying essentially for the loan portion of the project, over $600,000 financed over 40 years. Those customers are going to pay for that loan in the form of a surcharge that'll be added to their water bill. So MUB is actually just a conduit for that IJDC money to directly benefit those customers and residents of Rockleigh Road.
So how much, how much, because we have heard from some people saying, you know, if you're going to, you're going to put water to these people, why don't you put water to our place? But the point we made was, well, but they're putting the majority of it in, we're just augmenting what the people are putting in. How much, do you have an estimate of how much per household each person will put in in order to get the water here? Or each house will put in?
Well, I haven't done the math, but essentially, they're paying a $600,000 loan divided by 29 households. So let's just do the math easily. That's 30 households.
$58.17.
Well, that's the surcharge per month.
Right. That's the surcharge. That isn't what they're contributing.
Oh, okay.
What's the total contribution?
Well, they're actually...
Are you writing down the number?
Oh, I thought you were writing that number. Say it again.
They're going to be paying $607,000, the loan that we're going to take out on their behalf is $607,000.
So about $20,000 a piece?
Right.
A house. $20,000 a house.
Right.
That'll be repaid.
Actually, but they have city water, that's, you know, it seems like a lot on one hand, but on the other hand, they have city water, that's, if you're building a house, $20,000 to make sure you have all the city amenities is true.
Are there provisions for additions to this if, in other words, let's just say that somebody else built a, another house?
There can be, yes, sir.
I mean, I would assume that there would be a provision there for that.
Right. We always prepare these expansions for the potential for further expansions in the future.
Well, I mean, for adjustment of the fee. In other words, this...
Yes. The fee will be revisited annually.
Okay.
And in the event that new customers come in, or in the unlikely event that existing customers move out, either way, if that customer count changes, we'll revisit that calculation annually and reset that surcharge annually.
Yes, sir. Another question I always bring up on these water projects is fire hydrants. What's the plan for fire hydrants?
We do have fire hydrants proposed for this. I don't recall the exact count. I think it's two or three hydrants.
But this is inclusive?
It is.
Includes this?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. What's the wishes of the commission?
Move that we provide the $50,000 local match.
Second.
A motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
And thank you for doing this. It's been a priority of the commission.
The, I, back in 1992, I tried to work with MUB to do something out there, but over half the people didn't want to do anything. So I commend Rocky and the citizens there, and I know MUB has always been very generous in trying to make, make these expansions. I would, if it would be at all possible, I'd love to see city water all over the place, but, you know, when, when someone has to pay $100,000 per house to get water, which are some places like that, you know, they, it can't be done. But let's hope in the near future, more, more projects are done as we grow.
Just one step at a time.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
How are we moving towards the other project where we were going to have to, you know, have to build the new reservoirs? Is that moving forward, I guess?
It is moving forward.
Okay. Just having heard. Could you, whenever you get a chance, just like, just give us an update, because people have asked and...
He can give us an update right now, because he just gave an update the other day for the city.
Recall with that, that reservoir project has been married with a expansion of our wastewater treatment plant. The schedules of those two projects have kind of separated now, so that the wastewater plant project is moving faster than the reservoir project, and we don't want to hold one up for the, for the benefit of the other. So the wastewater project has, we've already advertised for bids. Those bids will be opened September 27 or 28, and we expect to issue bonds November 30, and go to construction plus or minus January 1. That's a four-year construction period, almost 43 months. So we'll go to construction January 1, 2017, and complete construction somewhere mid-2020. So that project's right on track, moving along well. The reservoir project is moving along well, but the regulatory permitting for that project is more complex than anything we've done in the past, and that's slowed us down a bit. So we expect that we'll probably advertise for bids on the reservoir project, possibly mid-October to late, late October, and take it to construction, probably issuing the bonds in January or February 2017, and starting construction earlier in the spring of 2017.
And how long is that project?
That project will be between a year and a half and two years.
Thank you. Because people have asked, and I just wanted to know. Okay. Thank you.
Happy to report on it.
Thank you.
Those two combined are the biggest public works project in the history of the state.
Oh, really? Now, the first.
I don't mean to embarrass you, Rocky, but instead of making you wait to stick around, I wanted to ask about your and Gordon Schilling's induction into the Moreton Town High School Sports Hall of Fame? And what, who do people need to contact if they want to attend? Can you tell us about?
The principal and athletic director are coordinating, county higher coordinating all of it. There's a, there's a dinner on Friday night with the presentations, and there's a halftime little presentation, and they have unveiling of the placards after the game. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Gordon and, Gordon was a year ahead of me, but was in Sally's class, and you were a couple years behind me, but we were all there about the same time. Congratulations. That's excellent.
Thank you very much.
I'm planning on trying to attend.
God willing, I'm going to be there.
Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to talk to you about. Okay. It's now 10:20. Estate of Anna R. Long, objections to the final settlement. Is anyone here on the Anna R. Long estate? Yes, sir. Please arise, identify yourself and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Noel Brock. I'm an attorney, state of West Virginia. License number 7131.
Okay. And you represent?
The certain heirs of the estate of Anna R. Long, along with the law firm of Ray Witten and Kelly.
Okay. All right. And are any of your clients here, or are you just here representing them? Okay. That's fine. I just want to clarify so we can have it right on the record. Sir?
Thank you. I'm Brian Edwards. I'm the executor of the state of Anna R. Long. I'm here along with Joshua Rogers to offer a follow-up response.
We have another chair, sit that way.
You can pull up another chair.
Okay.
Whichever is more comfortable.
I could sit back here.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. Josh, you're just with the firm of?
I'm with Dinsmore and Shoal. Mr. Edwards, in his capacity as executor, hired my firm to help out with the establishment of, or the creation of the foundation, to get the tax exempt status for the foundation we're going to talk about.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anyone else with you all?
No.
No one? Okay. All right. We have the parties, Commissioner Hawkins, Eldon Callen, and Tom. Okay? We have a presentation of the final settlement, and then we have objections. We're here, really here, the objections. Do you, I'm sorry, sir.
Noel Brock.
Noel Brock. Mr. Brock, you want to proceed?
Sure. Well, we really just would like to slow down just a little bit here and really kick the tires and sort of question the validity of the residuary beneficiary, which in this particular will is a charitable remainder trust, or charitable trust. We would ask that the commission refer this question to a fiduciary commissioner to investigate the validity of the residuary beneficiary, the charitable trust.
Okay. That's basically your request?
Yes.
Is there any response?
Yes. I don't know what the basis for this objection is. Ms. Long formed two trusts, and I would say I think the commission hopefully has a copy of the response.
I have, I've read all the documents.
And there is one mistake that I have. I put the people objecting with the great nieces and nephews, just the nieces and nephews, some of them, not all of them. But basically, Ms. Long formed a, two charitable trusts as part of her estate planning back in 2013. One was a charitable remainder trust, and one was the Anna Long Foundation, which is the beneficiary of the residual trust, or her residual estate. Actually, Mr. Gianola was the attorney who formed the trust documents. Those were executed. The charitable foundation was immediately funded and continued, started operations there soon after it was formed. The foundation, the plan of Anna Long, and has set forth was to be funded by her residual estate, and that exactly is what has occurred here. This estate, Ms. Long was very meticulous in her planning, and also of her records and finances, and we were able to basically move this estate along and have it finalized in fairly quick order. There was specific bequeaths to specific beneficiaries. Those bequeaths have already been sent out. Six, I believe, of the nieces and nephews, which don't constitute all of them, have now filed this objection, questioning the validity of the Anna Long Foundation. They had been provided a copy of the trust document that formed Anna Long Foundation by their request. I provided that to them. There is no question that it actually is a foundation. I mean, it was formed properly. It has its own EIN number. Joshua Rogers is forming the corporation to make sure that it is functioning so it can function as it is intended to, as a charitable foundation, and in compliance with the Internal Revenue Service. And that is, was allowed for under the terms of the trust, and that's what's occurring. I don't see any basis, in fact, or law, for this objection. Quite frankly, this estate, there's no reason to keep it open. There's no reason to prolong it. There's no reason to cost this estate any more funds, as that residual of the estate is for charitable purposes. And it would be Mrs. Long's wish that those, that her foundation be allowed to, her wishes were that they be able to provide funds to her charitable interest that she had told me about. And for those reasons, we would object to any of, I guess we would ask that the objections be overruled, and that the estate be closed and be allowed to move forward.
This is already gone through the fiduciary commission?
It has. It's already been, the fiduciary commissioner has already...
Were you aware of that? Or your people were aware that this has already been through the fiduciary commission?
I was not. I was not. I just saw this response today as well, I would like to add. The reason we question the validity, commissioners, respectfully, is we looked on the IRS website last night before I went to bed. This, this trust is not listed as a exempted organization. It was, the documents were signed in 2013, and like a pour-over trust in a will, a revocable trust, this was a trust between two unrelated parties. You don't, you have a different grantor and a different settler receiver of the trust. So in addition, we checked on the Secretary of State's website, you know, we see no entity have been formed. We have no record of filing for a tax exempt number. We have no record of filing a Form 1023, which was required of all charitable organizations. Now, I do see that attached to this response is a application for a tax exempt number that was only filed in 2016, actually on June 27 of 2016. That should have been filed in '13 when the trust was formed. So we still question the validity...
Help me here. Here. I just want to ask a question, so I'm going in the right direction with you. This, this trust is to be, was to be formed as part of the testator's will, right?
No. This is a separate trust that was created in 2013. It's a charitable trust under the Internal Revenue Code, and as such, that imposes certain duties and obligations upon the trustee to do things and take actions. And the trust actually sets out actions that were supposed to be taken. There were accountings to be done. You know, the trust should have had a bank account. It should have been making, you know, presumably making...
Since 2013?
Yes. It's very different from a revocable trust that you're thinking about under a will that says, when I die, I put everything in this trust. This, this trust document drafted purports to be a trust in 2013.
Can I ask a question? So she died on March 5, 2016. So then you asked for the, the letters in June, which would make sense. I mean, it would be in the, in the same time period. I'm still a little confused if you can answer one question. Could you respond to the three, just real quickly, you know, just the response?
I was going to do that.
Thanks. Because this is going to get, I'm trying to...
I was going to ask them to respond. Thank you.
Commissioners, if it's my turn, say. Commissioners, without trying to get down on the weeds, Mrs. Long's will was drafted, and as Brian Edwards articulated, Rocky Gianola actually is, for short of form this plan, but it was drafted as a, what we call a pour-over will, to pour over to a separately created trust. So basically, her residuary estate was to pour over to this trust. Now, the trust was formed, and as a revocable trust in 2013, but Mrs. Long didn't fund it at that time, and a person can certainly choose to wait and fund that trust upon her death through a will, which is what she chose to do. Now, as far as the application for tax exempt status, Mr. Edwards engaged my firm a couple months ago here in 2016 to actually pursue the tax exempt status. Now, it wasn't pursued in 2013, at the time the trust was formed, because the trust wasn't operational, there was no assets. Now, we're pursuing the tax exempt status, which is why it's not showing up on the IRS website. Now that we're pursuing the tax exempt status, because assets are going to be placed into this trust once the, and there's nothing that requires, that I'm aware of, and nothing that's been cited here, that requires an irrevocable trust to immediately apply for the tax exempt status. Now, whenever it does get the tax exempt status, it'll just be effective from that date forward. So anything that would have gone on inside of the trust before the tax exempt status So, anything that would have gone on inside of the trust before the tax exempt status was applied for may or may not receive that tax exempt treatment, but, but there's no, there hasn't been anything going on, the trust was never funded.
But it was, the funding of this trust was enabled by the.
The will.
Her death.
That's correct, the will left.
And the will became the, the controlling document.
It's what we call a pour-over will, yes.
Right, that's, that's what I was trying to say before, that's what I thought, the way I read it as well.
But this trust in particular is not drafted though, it's drafted as a, an independent trust that either had life or not immediately. And so, we, for those reasons, we question the validity of the trust.
Do you all want to add anything?
I mean, the trust meets the legal requirements under the Uniform Trust Code of a valid trust when Mrs. Long chose to fund it, whether it was, she certainly could have funded it during her lifetime, actually chose it, she chose not to do that, she chose to fund it at her death through her will. I'm not aware of anything that's been cited here.
Let me ask you all a more generic question. The fiduciary commissioner for us is, takes evidence and comes up with a suggested finding of facts. So far, what I hear today, and I'm going to give you all a chance to respond, the objections relate directly to the legal matters that created this document, whether it was created legally, whether it was, meets the legal standard as of a trust. And those decisions are more, well, are answered in the circuit court. So, even if we send it to the fiduciary commissioner, any sort of findings by the fiduciary commissioner would not go to the legal objections that he's making, to whether it was set up validly, whether it was properly done. All those are things that belong in circuit court, is what I hear. So, I'll start with you, Mr. Brock, would you agree with that?
Well, certainly, the circuit court is the one to hear questions of law, no doubt about that. But we were hoping to ferret out some facts as well here, for example, the trust references an Exhibit E, attached Exhibit, I'm sorry, Exhibit A, which is supposed to have a bunch of assets that were presumably put in on day one, but we don't even find Exhibit A attached. Does one exist, if so, where is it, you know, were bank accounts formed, have donations been being made? I think what I'm hearing today is no, that really nothing happened until now.
Right, they said that.
Yeah. So, I guess another thing, if, if this was all, if people think it's valid and good, then there's no harm in the commissioner looking at it. The, the next resort, if our clients choose to go that far, would be a repeal to the circuit court, or, yeah, either, either to challenge the validity of the charitable remainder, or charitable trust, residual trust is what, the correct wording, or a full-blown will contest.
Yeah, will contest, or, or to go after the assets that you could, may not be there. I mean, all that could be done in the circuit court. My, I know the general feeling, and I work with commissioners all over this country, and you know, the general feeling is, oh, just give it to the fiduciary, give it to the fiduciary, and, and I, I'm, I'm not that quick, I'm an attorney also. And I'm not that quick to do that, because I don't care whether the person is worth $10,000 or worth $10 million. I don't care, every time it takes money out of an estate unnecessarily, it's money out of the estate, because that invariably is who pays for it. So, so I'm not just the automatic send it over to the fiduciary commissioner. So, I just wanted to explain my, my feelings as to why I'm questioning this so much, as to, it seems to me, and then I'll let you all answer this, this and my previous comments. It seems to me that your clients would be a lot better off for any monies that they spend to get right in the circuit court and not spend money over on a fiduciary commissioner, trying to make a decision on something that will have no bearing or have no meaning to the circuit court case either. That's, that's my position. Do you want to respond to what I said previously in this as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, I am confident that everything was done proper, and this is what Mrs. Long wishes were, we followed into the letter. I don't, I agree with Commissioner Callen that sending it to a fiduciary is not going to resolve anything in this case, we'll provide the same evidence. In fact, anything that's been asked of me has been provided to all the heirs throughout this entire process. There, if they wish to contest the will, there are more power to them. If they wish to contest the validity of this, and they wish to go spend the money to do that, more power to them. But it shouldn't be coming out of the estate at this point in time, let them bear the burden of that.
Yeah, and then still have to pay the fiduciary commissioner, and I don't know what the end result is. Any, either commissioner having further questions or any of these gentlemen?
I have no.
Okay, thank you. What's, what's the wishes of the commission?
Okay, before us is the actual, the question before us is, do we agree to the objections?
Whether we accept the objections and refer it to a fiduciary commissioner, or whether we reject the objections and accept the final settlement. And then they have a right to automatic right of appeal to the circuit court on this, plus all the other issues they come up with.
Well, I'll move with discussion, I, I move to reject the findings and move, and accept the final report.
Second.
Okay, for discussion.
Yeah, Ms. Brock, I will tell you, I'm one of those ones who usually sends it back to the fiduciary, and I'm not, I mean, I do, I, I'm uncomfortable because he has the attorney back, you know, background, I don't, so I'm a little concerned when I make legal decisions. But in hearing what you're saying, I agree exactly with the president that no matter what we say or do, it's, it could end up in court. And I don't see, I have a real resentment to use the funds money to pay for that. If they want to go forward on that and contest the will, I, I, I understand that. I don't see anything here that shows me they've done anything wrong or to, for the objections. So, that's why I moved in that way, and I agree with the president, it's, well, in his discussion, that clearly there's nothing that, you know, that has come before me. Usually, there's like an accounting mistake or something like that, and I don't see anything along those lines, so that's why I did that, just for your information, okay.
Mr. Hawkins, do you have anything to?
No.
Okay, and I, I just, I just believe in the, in the long run, the quicker the estates get in the circuit court, the cheaper and the better it is for everybody. So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Good luck to all of you.
Hopefully, you work out.
Save, save you some extra money and time trying to schedule with the fiduciary commissioner. You're welcome, okay.
Wonderful.
Okay, our next one is estate of Geneva Ann McCroby. Okay, sir, you identify yourself and.
Eric Charles Smith.
And you're, where's your residence, here in Mon?
Here in Mon County.
Mon County?
Yes.
And you are the, you are the objector?
Yes.
Is that right? Is anyone else here present on the?
All that I'm aware of.
Estate of Geneva Ann McCroby, the, let's see, the executor on that estate is?
David McCroby.
David McCroby.
Right, which he lives in Florida, which is my brother.
Okay, he, he's, he's doing the estate from Florida.
No, no, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the other beneficiary.
No.
Yeah, the, the.
I'm just looking for the name here.
Kenneth Austin.
Yeah, yeah, he's not here.
Kenneth Austin.
Yeah, he's not.
And we have, I have a report here from Judy Jenkins in the clerk's office that he was sent notice.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, for, well, it's past time, it's 10:30 time, he's got notice. For, please, please just state your objections.
My objections are due to the lack of, on the actual settlement that he filed with the, with the clerks, that, the lack of detail. It's very vague, there are just a few things on there, and I feel that there was other things that, that I listed in, in my letter. My grandmother had inheritance from her estate from her siblings that weren't accounted for. I, I was asked about it after her death, and he was like, I don't know, like, there was no type of, I mean, he was a part of that too, so he knows that she received that. No receipts for, like, expenses for funeral and other related costs for that. I know she had banking with, including a, and I was always told bonds, safe deposit box. There was a big confusion of, before she passed, that he was told that, that her deposit box was removed from the bank by him. And then upon her death, he says, no, it's still in the bank, but it's not listed on any of these papers that he has filed far as her assets or anything like that. Basically, just lack of detail of everything, I mean, I've seen, I've seen estate settlements for, and they're pretty detailed from, you know, we paid doctor bills from here, there, there, and this is where we end up. And this was, had two or three things on it, which I have no idea. And from the course of him handling the estate to closure, the communication's been very little. And when I have asked about something, I've always referred to his son. Now, his son's not the one that's supposed to be dealing with all this.
What was, what was, what was his relationship to your mother?
It's my grandmother.
Her grandmother, I'm sorry.
They were brothers and sisters.
Okay, this is her brother?
Right.
Okay. All right, he lives in Independence?
Yes.
Anything else you want to add as to your objections?
No, basically, I mean, just, that's, that's it.
This is, this is the one, the ones that always give me the most heartburn, because I feel for the family, the estate is so small.
It is so small. And the bad, and the bad thing of it is, is, you know, we were told what was there, and we were questioned about, hey, you know, this, it was, I don't know about. So, the contact and the communication between is unwilling, and it's just, you know, you just wait to see what evolves. But then when you come in, when you get a settlement that has a refund from a healthcare thing and some kind of other insurance policy for $2,000, that's pretty vague, you know what I mean? And, and, and one of the, one of the things is, is, you know, we were always told that her funeral was paid for. Well, he claimed that it wasn't, and that he had to pay for it. He claimed there was no bonds, but then he told me, oh, we cashed bonds to pay for her funeral. So, it was like, it's like, willy-nilly.
You're an accountant.
Yeah, basically, accurate accounting, and, you know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
No.
This is the one that always concerns me, because you send it, they were to fiduciary commissioner, and then the state's so small, there's no money left anyway. Now, we could choose to do that, or we could choose to grant the objections and direct Mr. Austin to come before us to explain why his final settlement don't meet those standards. I don't know, which, you, you want to make a motion and discuss, or do you just want to kick around some ideas?
Well, let's kick around some ideas. I guess my question is, if we do that, which makes more sense, would you be willing, is it permissible, that you could send us a list of those questions, specific questions like the?
Sure.
So, we would know, for example, I could say, well, is there this box that's in, you know, what is in it? Because I'd like to be specific of what some of your questions are than just a generic, that would be fine with me.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
The, you know, you didn't, you didn't apply for the removal of the executor, which you have the right to do that as well. And you could do that if he continues to be unresponsive, you can always file for that as well.
And what kind of, if I do that, who?
Most likely, we'd appoint you.
Yeah, okay, I got, I got you, I got you, but then, then would I have free reigns to look at anything as far as?
You'd have the authority to, to go look, find, and do what was necessary to enforce your job.
What's involved in doing that, because obviously, you show.
I, I, I don't have the time to go through all that.
Right.
If you have any concern, Carrie Blaney, she has an excellent person down there, Judy Jenkins, that knows this.
Yes, I know Judy.
And you need to talk.
Talk to her, absolutely. And, and that was, like, that was called what now? Removal?
Removal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my recommendation would be that we would move to do.
Accept the objections.
Accept the objection, and also have a hearing, and also request from you specific questions to be answered.
That's fine.
Is that?
That's a decent motion, do you have a date and time?
Yeah, with the date of?
Requesting, and requesting that Mr. Austin be present.
Yeah, Mr. Austin, yeah, be present.
Right.
With documentation.
Yes.
Yeah, documentation and all this, yeah.
I'd say, you mean the amount of time or preparation time?
Preparation time.
I'd say four weeks at least, get all the proper notices and time for one to consider, and to give Mr. McCroby an opportunity to decide what direction you want to go.
That's the, October the 5th.
I won't be there, but I trust those two of making that.
You want to put that in?
That's, that's, I think, I think it needs to be the next, I think it needs to be, there's a, we might end up canceling that. There, there's an oil and gas expo I've been invited to, out of my.
October 12th.
I might want to go.
Okay, so part of the motion would also be to have him come before the commission on October 12th at?
10:15.
At 10:15, with documentation to explain his findings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Far as, far as my attentive questions that I need, when do I need to get those?
Just get it to Renata, you have Renata's information.
Okay, we'll get that, as long as you get it to us like a week before, so we can review it.
Well, he needs to know what to approve of, so.
Oh, that's right.
Why don't you get them to Judy too?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then Judy could also, okay.
Say, these are the questions, we're looking to be answered.
Yeah, that way then it saves the money in the, for right now.
I, I, I just, I just, you know, the fiduciary committee is a great system, except for small states, it costs a lot of money.
And I appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Well, appreciate it, hopefully it can work out.
Good luck, hope it works out. Rebecca Jones?
Yes.
How are you? You, you asked to come and talk to us shortly, briefly, please have a seat.
Yes, so I was here in May to, a petition to remove my sister Leah Cordwell as executor. You approved the petition, and you passed a motion asking that she do an accounting of what she had done so far.
Final accounting, yes.
Yes.
And she has not done that so far, so now I am here to get permission to be sworn in as executor, despite her.
I thought we already did that. Then we, well, then we already grant, carried you now of this situation, are you familiar with this state? I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't recall.
You guys, you guys appointed her executor.
Yes.
But you were wanting the previous executor to file her final accounting, that's why she has not taken her oath yet, because the final accounting has not been.
Oh, okay.
She has not filed the final accounting.
Well, actually, we should have been a little more, in our motion, we probably should have said, give it a deadline for the accounting, if not, she could be sworn in, so, so that she didn't have to come back.
It's my understanding, sir.
Remember that in future, in future, when you make a motion to remove someone, order a final accounting, give them a deadline, and then if that the person will be sworn in, whether or not the accounting is submitted or not.
It's my understanding that the sister has not responded, any corresponded, they can't even find, can't even find her.
Yeah, we did find a forwarding address, but it is a P O box, so.
She doesn't live there.
Yeah.
So, if we wish.
So, I guess the, the motion would be, it's not, it's not on the list, but I don't think it's out, out of line of what our intent was at the previous motion. I, I think what we really need is a clarifying motion that, that Mr. Rebecca Jones can be sworn in as the replacement executor immediately.
A move that Rebecca Jones be sworn as replacement executor and move forward with the estate.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you.
Sorry for the situation.
You had to come back in. You had to come back in. Well, we'll have to make sure our motions are thoroughly
Yeah. You showed a little loophole that we now need to be careful of.
Right. Thank you. Good luck.
And wish you best of luck. When are you due?
New Year's Eve.
Oh, great. That should be an interesting
You're awful risky, man.
I know.
That's what my sister said. I said that to my sister one time. She says, you're awful risky. What do you think you're saying there? And then after she beat up on me for five minutes, then she said, oh, yes, I am expecting. Congratulations. Best of luck.
Officials left.
Officials left, yeah.
Everyone's gone.
Okay, reports from, oh, Carrie, did you have anything to report?
Just that next week, we'll be bringing before you the poll workers and precincts for approval. And I have been working with the, and getting approval from the two political parties to add two additional early voting sites for the general election. One, we were able to use Westover Senior Center as a early voting location, as well as Election Day, and also West Virginia University Alumni Center. We will only be able to use the Alumni Center for one week. So we won't have it for the full 10-day period, but we will have it a five-day period from October 31 through November 4. So I will bring that before you next week.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, reports from county commissioners. Commissioner Hawkins?
I'd like to thank Dr. Gee, Ron Justice, N W V U for accommodating us at Ballgame. It was really a great opportunity to meet a lot of people from around the state. Really had a good time. Sunday, of course, was the Farm Bureau picnic. And again, another good time was had by all, both Commissioner Callen and I attended. Really good people that, you know, that come out to support farming. Tuesday, I've got to commend both commissioners on their eloquent speaking at the dedication of the new flagpoles at Mason Dixon Park. It was a pleasure, and both speeches were short. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruble?
Yeah, I want to thank all three commissioners for showing up yesterday, and also Bobby Doyle and his staff for put, really put in the extra work. And I have probably received numerous letters and emails. And thank you to the commissioners for opening up a whole new area down on Western End, and they're really looking forward to it. So I think it's a real positive thing that we are doing. The second thing, real quickly, I'm going to ask, we are having a fundraiser food drive on Friday, September 16 at 7:30, 5:30 to 7:30 on the Courthouse Square for the pantry plus more program. I was going to ask the county commissioners if it was possible to allow Renetta to just send a letter to the elected officials with a note or, that just says it's going on in case people want to bring it during the day, the food, and as long as that's permissible to you all.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I didn't think it needed a motion. I just wanted to
Right, no, I don't think it does.
Okay, and I am allowed to say, okay, I can say now publicly, that there will be a national TV program coming here. It's a reality race. And as long as the person has made it to that stage, they are planning to film, that was why they're coming here, the group is going to be helping out in the fundraiser. But that's all I'm allowed to say.
Yeah, very good. You're actually going to hold it back.
Yes, yes, I am holding it back. I'm not saying anything. I was allowed to say that.
That's good, Tom. I just want to echo the ribbon-cutting ceremony, the, 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 the flag has a special significance to all of us. And that was, that was moving. And even though I missed your presentation, Tom, and I apologize for that, I heard afterwards that it sounded like the two of us coordinated very closely.
Exactly. I was surprised, yes.
On what we said. So I appreciate you mentioning that, Ed. I want to also thank, thank the number of people specifically that helped make the openings so, I heard from so many people that it was one of the best ones they've ever been to, that it was, I heard from the state people that were so well-coordinated. I want to thank Jambi Anthony Jamrani for his efforts, him and his, he and his staff were just exceptional in coordinating the parking, coordinating the seating. And I saw him out there, so I don't know if he's out there right now or not. Is Jambi out there? Tell him to come in here for a second.
Sir, I heard you.
Sir, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you so much for your and your people's efforts last Thursday. You did an exceptional job. You kept things flowing. I heard from members of the state and all that it was so well professionally done. And I said it was Jambi that did it. So I want to thank you very much for being my lieutenant. You did an exceptional job. So please pass that on to your people and
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Certainly. I've got, we've got a couple of things that's going on in the next week or so. I've got Region 6 workforce. At that time, on Friday, at that time, we're going to, I'm going to acknowledge Barbara Di Mary's work in recognition for our Region 6 workforce being selected by NACO as the model workforce region in the country. So I'll give you all more information on that later. Okay, anything further?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. We're adjourned.